The City Council Committee on Ordinances, Licenses, and Legal Affairs co-posted with the Committee of the Whole and joint meeting with the Traffic and Parking Commission. Met in council chambers on Thursday, February 29, 2024 at 6:36 PM. For the purpose of discussing the right on red ordinance for traffic lights in Northwest Salem. Notice of this meeting was posted on February 14, 2024 at 11:07 AM. Absent from the committee is Counselor Cohen. Joining us from the Committee of the Whole are Councillors Presniewski, Varela, Gerzalo, Stott, and Merkel. And also with us from the city staff are Dave Kucharowski from Traffic and Parking, Lieutenant Tucker from the Police Department, and John Giardi from the Electrical Department. I'm going to kick it over to Jaime to start the Traffic and Parking Commission.
All right, can you hear me on the microphone? Okay, so thank you Chair. This is Jaime Kermiti, I'm the Chair of the Traffic and Parking Commission. Take a roll call attendance.
Brendan Casey.
Jeff Swartz.
Aaron Tiaroski.
Lieutenant Tucker.
Thank you all present, we are now in order.
Thank you, and I'm going to remind people, especially Erin, speak right into your microphone, just so it comes out over the Zoom. Okay, so tonight, this is a continuation, second part for Northwest Salem, and we do have one map, if Mr. Kucharowski wants to come up and share the map with us. And while he's doing that, we do have a few members of the public in the room and a couple over Zoom. I'm going to try and take public comment during the discussion of the lights at the intersection, so if you have something specific to an intersection, if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function, and hopefully I can see you. And if you're in the room, you can just raise your hand and we'll bring you to the microphone.
Everyone hear me? David Kucharowski, Traffic and Parking Director. This is the third map that we'll be reviewing, just to orient everyone about the arrows. They represent the different approaches to each of the intersections, the signalized intersections that we are analyzing. The green arrows represent those that are identified in the ordinance and are signed. The pink purplish arrows are those that are not in the ordinance and signed. The blue ones are in the ordinance and not signed, and the browns are not in the ordinance and not signed. We also have a purple line that represents state roads, so that indicates which signals are under state jurisdiction as opposed to the city. And then we've been identifying crash data over the last year, and Lieutenant Tucker will have some more details about those crashes and whether or not they are related in some way to a right on red. With that, I think I'll start in the southern part of this area and work my way north. So if you look here in the bottom right corner, where you see the number four, that's the intersection of Jackson and Dove, the entrance to the hospital, as well as the Amazon distribution facility. Our records indicate that three of the approaches are neither signed nor in the ordinance. And the westbound approach is in the ordinance, but there's no signage currently at this location. And over the last year, we identified four crashes. I'd like to hand it off to Lieutenant Tucker if he's got some information to provide.
I came up with the same thing, four crashes, nothing there had anything pertaining to right on red. There were some accusations of people running the light either straight through or in one case, a left turn, but nothing right on red there.
Okay, and that whole intersection is underdesigned by the city, right?
That's correct.
Any questions on that one? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said in the last meeting, I feel that as of right now, the right on red topic has gone further than just right on red. And looking at it more in depth, the amount of crashes or incidents that have been in these intersections, the numbers compared to the amount of traffic that goes through it is very minuscule compared to exactly that, the amount of traffic that goes through. And the fact that we're talking more about every incident that goes on in these intersections, I just feel that I'd like to make a motion to discharge this from OLA and possibly send it over to Public Health and Safety. I think that's where it belongs at this point. I think individual councilors, if they have certain intersections in their area that they're concerned about, then they should be discussing that with Mr. Kucharowski and getting the information, and again, bringing it to Public Health and Safety. And then if there's an ordinance or something that needs to be taken care of, then it would come to us. So I'd like to make a motion to discharge it from OLA and send it back to council and send it into Public Health and Safety.
Okay. I would need a second for it to be under discussion. Okay, under discussion.
Thank you Chair. Would it be possible to get, I guess, clarification in the room about why it would make sense, you know, maybe for some of the newer councilors for it to be in OLA? And then I'm also curious about what the process would look like if it was discharged and put into another committee, would we start the process over? Like, how would that work, just for my own knowledge?
I think it would probably merit some discussion about how it got here. The item was unanimously sent to OLA. It does have to do with the ordinances, because we're talking about changing the ordinances to either update them for right on red or to change them for right on red. That was the initiation of the discussion for why it went to OLA. There was no discussion at that point to send it to Public Health and Safety. That's the history of it. If it goes to Public Health, it's up to the Chair of that committee to decide how to put it through. I feel like we're, you know, we're a good way into this discussion. And discussing safety at intersections is not something that I take lightly. I think we need to look at, I mean, we just went through one where we did not go through all of the crashes at that intersection. But understanding how intersections are used, what the patterns are for traffic and pedestrians, and making decisions on the merits of a right on red at a intersection is worth our time, in my opinion. We purposely started with the two maps we started with, knowing that there were not going to be many occasions to change them. But understanding traffic patterns at intersections in the city is important. This is the first time this has ever happened. We often send complaints into Traffic and Parking or the Police Department. And if we make calls continuously, we might get some action. I feel like having a public discussion about intersections and allowing the public to also send in their issues with intersections is an important thing for us to do as a body. The complaints that I get as a ward counselor about intersections where it comes to pedestrians, but not only intersections, streets in general, but this was a way to kind of break it down and look at behavior in an intersection, right? And it's an important discussion, whether it happens in OLA or whether it happens in Public Health and Safety, is, you know, it doesn't matter in this committee though, because that's where it was sent. Counselor Watsonville.
Thank you Chair. So I find this to be a really complicated and huge undertaking. And I give you all the credit in the world for being the one to champion this conversation. I agree with every single thing you just said. The only thing that has me causing pause with Counselor Harvey's motion and thinking through it some more is that what I think we've discovered through this incredibly important conversation is that the signage seems to be almost a little bit irrelevant. Like, I think we have multiple issues here. I think we have an issue of ordinance cleanup, which is something we would look to the Traffic and Parking Director and his team to decide with their subject matter expertise if it needs remedying, right? With, obviously, with Lieutenant Tucker's conversation as well. I think we have an issue of needing to understand if there are places where more right on red should be put in, which again, I would look to the Traffic and Parking Director and Lieutenant Tucker to advise us on. I think also, the conversation that we are having is an incredibly important conversation. I am with you, you and I share these values around pedestrian, bike safety, and car safety, driver's safety, everybody's safety. And the issue of really, really just bad behavior, right? Just like flaunting the ordinance. I think what we see here is like instances where there are ordinances for right on red and there are signage for right on red, and people are still violating. And that's a different conversation. Now we're getting into conversations around public awareness, enforcement, all of that. I think, I mean, I can understand Counselor Harvey's position in that this needs to be a broad, citywide conversation. And even if we do choose to eat the elephant and small bites, starting with something like right on red, it doesn't necessarily feel to me like it is a matter of ordinance review yet. Right now, we need to have a broad, public engagement conversation around safe driving and safe pedestrian behaviors and all of that. And I think ultimately, that should turn into ordinances that we can take action on in OLA. I think that I would not mind seeing this go to Public Health, Safety, and Environment, provided we have a commitment from the Chair. I am not willing to discharge without having a full commitment from the Chair that this gets then taken up almost immediately. I don't want this dying on the vine, because it is an incredibly important conversation. And it has to be co-posted, in my mind, as well. And it has to be, and we have to have a plan. I think we should structure a plan for how we address this, because I don't necessarily think spending time talking about right on reds is getting us where I think you and I both want to go ultimately, which is broad-scale safety conversations around traffic patterns in the downtown. And I say downtown, that's me, not you, in Salem, right, holistically. And that's outside of the motion that we took to move this to OLA, right? That's beyond that. So I'm willing to be convinced either way. But I personally want to make sure that if we are going to have a broad-scale community conversation around traffic patterns in Salem, that we are opening that up to the broad community, that we're saying that that's what we're talking about, that we're having everybody come to the table, and that we have commitment from the Chair of the other committee, that that will happen in short term. So I don't know exactly what to do with that tonight, except that I feel supportive of the motion. I don't want to discharge this without, and maybe we can discharge it from, we can take it back to the council for broad discussion around that, if it's the will of the body to discharge tonight. But I feel very, very strongly that this conversation has to continue.
So my response to that is, what you're talking about is a different order and a different discussion.
Exactly.
And what committee that happens in, it doesn't matter, but it's a different discussion.
I agree.
I'm not sure if that's what Counselor Harvey's talking about, I have no idea. But we have a matter in front of us that was sent to OLA. You know, I realize that these meetings are, I mean, the last meeting was an hour. That's not a long meeting, in my opinion, that's just a normal meeting. And we are getting some excellent input. We are involving the Traffic and Parking Commission. Any way you do this, if the ordinances come in through some other method, they still come back to OLA and we still go through all of them.
Right.
So, yeah, Counselor Merkel.
Thank you Chair Marcello, not being a member of the committee. And I also want to agree with what's been said. I appreciate the work that's gone into this. And it has branched out into a larger conversation organically. And it happens a lot that issues that come into council can definitely, you know, be interpreted as landing in a couple of different places. A lot of what we take up, you consider Public Health and Safety in many of our different committees. But we've already started this process, there's a lot of work done, we're already engaging. We've had a meeting, this is a series of meetings, and we're already, you know, we're already into that. And I think we'd be derailing something that's already in motion. And if we didn't feel, when, you know, the work is done, when your committee feels that they've done what they want to do with what's in front of us with these three meetings, we can always take up something that anyone in the council feels wasn't covered. You know, Public Health and Safety, and road safety, and pedestrian safety, you know, is never-ending. And we can certainly consider taking up matters that we didn't end up covering with this, if that makes sense. But I do think we'd be, you know, sending something off track that's already had a meeting and is in motion. And we have, you know, a lot of good information and feedback in front of us, thank you.
Counselor Harvey?
And I do agree with that, Alice, I'm sorry, thank you. But my point is, is the agenda says right turn on red. It does not discuss, and it does not say, that we're going to discuss traffic flow or any of that within these intersections. So in my opinion, we're misleading the public with what the agenda says, being it saying right turn on red. And that was my point exactly, believe me. I commend Mr. Kucharowski and Lieutenant Tucker with all the work that they put into this. But I think it's gone above and beyond, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. It's gone above and beyond what was originally supposed to have been discussed.
Can you tell me how you talk about right on red without talking about traffic patterns?
Well, I can answer your question in regards to the last meeting. I said, why are we going over every incident, not just the ones that were pertaining to right on red? And your answer to me was, well, we're already talking about this intersection, why don't we just talk about everything?
I think I said we're talking about traffic patterns, and we did uncover one.
Right on red's not a traffic pattern. But I mean, you were talking about right on red and incidents that happened in those intersections from right on red, and that's not what was discussed.
No, we're talking about whether a right on red should be allowed, which takes into consideration traffic patterns in the intersection. And when we went through them, we found the one that was not even noted as a right on red, but probably was. I'm not arguing with you, and I think that we're trying to condense the discussion of the incidents at the lights, right? But we're talking about how the intersection is used, and therefore, does a right on red make sense there, right? And you do need to look at actions that happen there, and also note that not every incident results in a crash, right? There's near misses, there's pedestrians getting trapped in the middle of a roadway. But we're just, you know, I'm not sure how this is against the discussion of whether a right on red would be allowed at that intersection if you're looking holistically at how that intersection is used and what's happening there. Counselor Watsonville.
Thank you Chair. I wonder if it's, I wonder if there's a compromise here. I wonder if the compromise is that we would request that, so first of all, this data is incredibly helpful, we've talked a lot about how incredibly insightful it is. And I think that because of how good this is and how important this is, it's triggering all of these other conversations around traffic patterns and intersections. I do think what we're missing here though, is, in my opinion, right? Is that I would love to have all of this in front of us alongside a clear recommendation from our Director of Traffic and Parking around which ones he and Lieutenant Tucker believe need to be updated or changed, right? And so whether that is, look, we've identified this many that are in the ordinance and not signed, we're rectifying that. Whether that is, this is not in the ordinance and signed, we're rectifying that. Whether that is, it's not in the ordinance and it's not signed, which is what we're really talking about, right? It's not in the ordinance and it's not signed. Here is the list of recommendations in this specific region, we believe, and here's why, right? We are putting forth a recommendation of including these places, these intersections, in the no right on red ordinances because of this crash data, these near misses, this reporting, this number of calls to the PD, et cetera. Because I think what we're doing here is, these conversations are naturally and obviously going to continue to expand, because it's an important issue and this data is bringing a lot to light. But, you know, like, for example, I'm looking at this map for tonight, and we have intersections at Bridge in Boston, and intersections at Jackson and 107 in Essex, where they're signed, they're in the ordinance, they're signed, and we've got five crashes. Now, those may not be directly related to the right turn on red, right? Which is why we end up getting into these conversations, because Lieutenant Tucker will come to the microphone, tell us what the stats are, and then we go, well, why, oh my gosh, why? So I just think there's probably a way to structure these meetings to focus on how we can take action on recommendations from the subject matter experts. And I am advocating for a broad-scale community conversation that talks about traffic patterns in Salem.
Okay, so that's fair, so let me offer this as a compromise. I think since this meeting was scheduled, and there's people here that are interested in these lights, maybe instead of focusing on the crash incidents, Lieutenant Tucker, maybe you could talk about your recommendation for that light, if you have one, or if you need to think about it, or if you need to, you know, go back and get some more data. And the same with Mr. Kucharowski. But we do have these lights in front of us. This is probably a good time to mention that we do need to reschedule the third meeting, which is downtown, which is the, that is the heavy lift, right? And so maybe for that meeting, we come into it with some recommendations from both of you, which lights you think could use some change? Maybe that would help? And then if there's lights, you know, if there's areas that they have not mentioned in their recommendations, which could also happen, then we discuss those. Does that sound like a compromise?
For my part, I feel really good about that plan, to take a structured approach specifically regarding the right turn on red. In my mind, it speaks to Counselor Harvey's concern about agenda creep and public engagement. And I think that it also enables us to then sort of lock and load action on this topic and then open up a broader conversation, which I think is imperative to happen under the purview of wherever we decide as a council. So I'm very comfortable with that, thank you.
Counselor Presniewski.
Thank you Chair Marcello. Maybe looking at it through a little bit of a different glasses. Taking a look at the data that was provided by the Police Department and the Traffic Commission, I'm surprised at the less amount of incidents that are at the intersections and how, I think what the data is showing is that the experts, being Mr. Kucharowski and his crew, and Lieutenant Tucker and his traffic, they're doing their job. Our numbers are way down, surprisingly way down compared to what I thought. So I'm looking at this saying, oh my God, these intersections, this is all that we've had. I think each of the councilors knows their intersections, knows what their constituents feel about their intersections, and they're the experts about the lights. We're not the traffic experts, none of us here are the traffic experts. They're the traffic experts, and the people that work for them. They should be the ones that are saying, okay, ward councilors, come to me with what you think are issues, and we'll address them. And we'll come to you as traffic people to see what you feel about it. Right now, I think we're kind of like three steps ahead of the game. I think it has to go from traffic, from our experts, to Public Health and Safety, where recommendations are made for ordinances to be changed, and then we as a body change the ordinances to make Salem a safer place. But right now, it just seems like we're spinning our wheels, because this isn't in our purview, this is in their purview. They're the experts, and I feel bad that they're coming here, meeting after meeting after meeting, talking about what they know to people that don't know what we know. We know, we're not the experts.
I'm not sure if I agree with what you just said there, but...
Well, can I just finish?
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you. And I don't look at this as derailing this at all. I look at this as enhancing, because each ward counselor will be given the opportunity to take a look at every intersection in their ward and say, and they know their ward, their constituents know their ward, this intersection is a problem. And then they can go to the experts who can work with them, and then we can bring it forward for an ordinance change. It just seems to me that we're just ahead of ourselves a little bit on this. We should be backing up and looking at it a little bit more, with a little bit more fine tuning and more ingredients and more input, especially from the ward counselors and the public, thank you.
Counselor Stott.
Thank you Chair Marcello, not being a member of the committee, because if I was, I would ask to move the question. But I would want to apologize for the inside baseball talk that we've had for 45 minutes, because we all did, at least in the intent to attend tonight and discuss certain intersection lights, which are in, a lot of them are in my ward, and a lot of them I am very familiar with. And through you, Madam Chair, I would like to ask Mr. Kucharowski a question, but I won't. But my question would be, how many lights have I brought to you to ask for additional research and lights? And Mr. Giardi, how many times have I asked for assistance? And it's literally, it could possibly be every single intersection in this city. As a ward counselor, and you might not get this as much, but as a ward counselor, it's very hard to say, hey, put me at the top of the pile, put me at the top of the pile. So that's why I really like this conversation, because we have the whole pile in front of us right now, and we can really kind of narrow down. Like, I'm really looking forward to that multi-colored intersection that we have going up at the top, the one that's the example, the shining example. Because no, we're not going to solve it tonight in committee, we're not going to solve it in OLA, but it's going to get the attention, it's going to get this broader conversation of what are the suggestions, what are the ideas? But I know so immensely that as a ward counselor, I wish it was as simple as sending an email and saying, hey, we need to fix this traffic light, because I understand the immense workload that everyone has and the priorities and the projects around the city. So that's why I really appreciate this conversation here. It's not perfect, because it's never been done before. So trying to figure it out, I appreciate it. And I, like I said, we're about 40 minutes into discussing the intersection, so thank you.
Counselor Watsonville.
Thank you Chair. I echo the sentiments of Counselor Ricciardi, and I wanted, or Counselor Stott, and I wanted to comment a little bit on some of Counselor Presniewski's comments. I agree with everything Counselor Stott just said with regards to pounding things through email to Dave and Lieutenant Tucker over and over and over again, and just trying to, you know, and knowing that what we're creating for them is a massive web through which they have to then decide how to move and curate and prioritize. I am 100% in support of a broad-scale, community-wide conversation about traffic patterns in Salem. I think what is not often represented here, that we also all here as councilors, are the calls we get around, I was almost hit, I tried to cross, someone turned on a walk light. Those are the things that don't always get called into the PD, that are not going to show up on these maps. That's why it's imperative that we all open the floor to a community-wide conversation. But again, that's not what the motion, that was not the order that got sent to OLA tonight, right? Or originally for this session. The session is meant to be with regards to right on reds. And I am, you know, I just, I reiterate that I want that conversation to happen. I also want to be able to take action on the order in front of us. And again, I do look to the experts to have recommendations on that. But I am not at all sorry that this has sparked this conversation, because I think that this is an important conversation, and it has to happen citywide. Thanks.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you Chair. I think to Counselor Stott's point, if we're looking for efficient...
I think to Council Stott's point, if we're looking for efficiency and saving time, we're certainly not doing that. And I think that Council Watsonville brings up a good point that without Council Cohen here, we can't really have that commitment that this would move forward. I think that in the spirit of compromise, maybe there could be discussion about, not right now, but going forward of just maybe labeling the agenda a little more clearly and talking, like, these meetings could maybe be called Traffic Pattern Conversation. We could workshop the language, but maybe that would quell some of the concerns.
It would have to be.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes. Just to reiterate, it would have to be in the order. The order was to discuss right on red at intersections.
Understood.
Okay. On the motion to discharge this from Ola and to send it to Public Health and Safety, all those in favor? All those opposed? The matter does not carry. Okay.
Sorry, Chair, one question. And we have commitment, though, to the plan that you outlined before, which is to discuss the patterns tonight and then focus on recommendations to take action on in the future and then a broader conversation at council.
The broader conversation would have to come in through a different order. So I will...
We'll make it. I'll make it. One of us will make it, yeah.
Yes, the third meeting on downtown, we'll do it a little differently and we'll discuss beforehand, but maybe we'll just have it more guided towards your recommendations for where you might make changes or what issues you see. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Where were we?
Before jumping in, if I may, I believe I've announced this, but the city did win a federal grant, a Safe Streets for All grant, to start this broader discussion, to create an action plan for the entire city that would look at our roads and intersections. So we just got our submissions from consultants, we're reviewing them now, we're hoping to select one in the coming weeks and start that process, which is intended to be about an 18- to 20-month-long process with stakeholder meetings and events and things like that. So just...
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for letting us know that. Okay.
Okay. So looking at the intersection with the number two, that's on Highland Ave at the hospital entrance, in both cases, they're in the ordinance but not signed. And I don't know if any of the crashes are related, but I would suggest if they're in, we would put them back.
Council Watsonville.
Thank you, Chair. So as we go through these, when we hit these moments of they're in but not signed or they're not in but randomly signed, do you have a plan to address those with DPS with regards to signage?
Yes, I was...
Thanks. So those are, we can all assume that those are takeaways for you. Okay, thanks.
Lieutenant Tucker, did you have anything to add on that intersection?
On that particular one, in the last year, and actually I went back three years, but in the last year or the last three years, there were no right on red incidents.
Thank you. Council Verella.
Thank you, Chair Marcello, not being a member of the committee, through you, through our Traffic and Parking team. When it comes to those four accidents, I just had a question as to what they were. I know that for me, that's a very sensitive intersection. I know years ago, we had op-duty police officer Dana Mazzola get killed in that intersection. And I just wonder why. What are the issues with that? Because I know that that happened other than... Please.
We just said we weren't going to have that conversation.
No, and my question was, those four incidents, what were those incidents? Through you, to the Chair. If we're not going to have those conversations because it's not the right on red, I guess we'll continue. Thank you.
To clarify, I have a spreadsheet of this area I can email to you, the synopsis of all the crashes, whether or not they had anything to do with right on red. That wasn't the intersection where he was killed. So that one, I don't want to go through crash by crash, there's no point in that.
Council Watsonville.
Thank you, Chair. Can we go through when the crashes are right on red-related? Can you highlight those for us? As we go through them?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that all right with you, Chair? Thank you.
That's pretty much my approach tonight was, I'll say yes or no.
Next intersection, the one identified with the number five, in both cases, the approaches are signed and they are in the ordinance.
We had one right on red crash in 2023. It was a vehicle that turned right from Jackson to Essex against the red and crashed into another vehicle that was actually turning onto Dalton Parkway. And I did find an older crash, 2022, same situation essentially, Jackson to Essex.
I'm sorry, can you check the signs there just for visibility from both sides? Just make sure, that's a tricky intersection also. I'm just wondering if maybe there's signage issues there, too?
They've been knocked down several times, various accidents. They're back up. Compliance is, it's actually fairly high, but violations are high, relatively speaking, there. And I think that was, on Jackson, I think we were looking at adding a second sign in the sightline.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
And just to note, the way it's written in the ordinance is somewhat confusing, so as part of our process, we were going to resubmit it to make it clear which approaches were they intended, I think, when they passed it. So I'll start with the intersection of Essex and Boston Street, where the two is. In that case, of the three approaches, two are signed and in the ordinance, the southbound and the westbound, the eastbound approach are signed nor in the ordinance.
No right on red. No right on red crashes there.
Thank you. Council Stott. Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I actually had a question about the Wilson, the one that we were just talking about with the two. That's Essex and Boston? No, the previous one. Sorry, I lost my map. Jackson Street, Jackson and... Jackson, one of, it's by the middle school. Yeah. Having a new middle schooler, I'm at that intersection a lot. I am wondering, so there were two related to right on red. I'm just wondering what, how you classify that as right on red. Obviously, it means a car is going through a red light to take the turn. That backs up that area a lot, going right. I'm wondering if people are, like, it's probably not quantified in your crash data, but people are taking that right, but it could be a safe right on red, but they're rushing to get to it because they know it's a no turn. Do you get what I'm trying to say?
I'll try, I'll try to address that briefly. There is guidance on these, so it's not, it's not just about crashes, not anything to do with a whim. It's crash history, pedestrian activity, sightlines. So there's guidance in the MUTCD, as Mr. Kucharsky pointed out the last meeting. So there is a case of two northbound lanes coming at you. I would support that right on, no, no right on red there. The crashes, one was at 6:00 AM and, when was it, nine, just before 9:00 AM. So I think, I think that answers your question. Those two kind of rules out that had anything to do with school traffic. I don't know what day of the week they were either, like, half the times. But that, you know, there is guidance that we follow and the ordinances or the signs that you see out there are based on that. Well, we're reviewing them, but that's the, that's the idea, is that they're placed out there following that guidance.
Thank you. And one more question, if I may, for you, Mr. Kucharsky, through the Chair. Have you gotten a lot of requests to look at that intersection in general, just for the safety, primarily in my mind, of the pedestrians, especially the middle schoolers?
That particular one, no. That is something that MassDOT is looking at as part of the 107 corridor project, so but I myself have none. I'm just going to continue west on Boston at Bridge, where the five is. This intersection was recently redone, and in each case, the approaches all have a right turn on red restriction.
Nothing in the last year. There have been a number of crashes there. Most of the crash activity seems to be vehicles turning on the green light but failing to yield to other vehicles that have the right of way to go straight. We do have one older crash that was categorized as right on red back in 2021, where vehicle turned right on red. It's actually going to Goodhue Street, which is technically a right on red, but really is just a plain old red light violation. And that was a crash there.
Any questions?
Council Stott.
Another one of my favorite intersections. Thank you, Chair. And this actually intersects, I think, four wards, so a special intersection. I agree with all the right on reds here. It's a really tricky, like, especially with the Goodhue entrance. That's what I see the most, is somebody thinking they're making a right, but no, they're just going straight through a red light. So I sit there often and I wonder if, like, painting or additional signage or something might help with understanding that, like, no, the stop line is back there further than up at the light. Because I also often see cars stop at the light versus before Goodhue. So I just wanted to throw that comment out there. Thank you.
Continuing down Boston Street, number three, that's where Grove and, I don't recall, Nichols.
Nichols, yep.
That's an offset intersection. That one, I have received a lot of emails and a former Ward Counselor had reached out to me as well. Had discussions with Ms. Giardi, had done some signal timing tweaks there as well, and we did, we did put signs out there. So I would recommend putting it in the ordinance for both approaches.
Okay. Anything on that? Mr. Giardi is nodding. He agrees. Okay.
No right on red crashes, mostly rear-end crashes at the red.
I'm going to jump back to Essex at Flint. Apologies, the southbound approach, that's, there's no right turn in there because Flint Street is one-way eastbound, so please disregard that. I can fix that in the future. But of the three approaches, there's no right on red in the ordinance nor any of those approaches signed.
Nothing there. Okay.
Crashes there.
Any, any questions?
At Flint and Bridge, this was also recently redone as part of the Bridge Street project. One of the, I guess you'd say, the northeastbound approach is signed but is not in the ordinance. And the other three, there's no signage or, nothing's in the ordinance.
Council Watsonville.
Thank you. I'd like to hear your recommendations on this intersection. I know we have some red light running that goes on there and we also have some tricky timing with crosslights and the width of some of those streets. Do you have a recommendation around any right on red there that you are, that you have concerns about? Specifically, do you recommend the one that is signed but not in the ordinance being added to the ordinance?
Yeah, I would add that to the ordinance. I think it was part of the analysis when this project was done. So I think there was counts and things done at the time and they were, part of it was to make the corridor safer there. So I would say that we should, we should adopt it of that case.
Thank you. Lieutenant Tucker, did you have any, anything to add to that?
There were no right on red crashes at this one. Yeah, I would support that one. I think the two that would receive the most attention from the public would be south on Bridge going right on Flint and east on Flint going right on Bridge. Those are relief points. I'm not advocating for or against them by saying that, but they're relief points of, you know, relieving some of the traffic. The sightlines are pretty good at those intersections. Not so much on the southbound on Bridge Street. You can't really see to your left up Flint, but coming out of Flint, making a right on Bridge is fairly open. So that would require further discussion, I think.
All right. Council Stott. Thank you, Chair, through you. I would just like to thank, also thank Mr. Giardi, who I know recently looked at those lights because that was an issue of running, running the red, and I think it was because of a timing issue with the lights, especially they lost power a few times. So thank you for that. I think that definitely made an improvement. And I agree with the signage that's there, so if we can codify that.
So we have two left, excuse me, located on North Street. The first one is at North and Mason. We have the, I guess the northeastbound approach on Mason has a right on red sign and is in the ordinance. The southbound is, is not in the ordinance today, or is it signed?
Actually, had about, in three years, we've had five crashes there. None of them are related to right on red. Most were rear-end. Two were left from Mason to North, which does not have the, you know, has a green right arrow or a red right arrow, whatever the case may be. Two of them were related to that. No right on red.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Here's your favorite one.
So this is School, Appleton, Orne, and at North. In each case, every approach is something different. The School Street approach is in the ordinance, but it's not signed. The northbound approach is not in the ordinance and not signed. The southbound approach is signed and in the ordinance. And the, I guess you'd say, the westbound, southwestbound approach from Orne-Appleton is neither in the ordinance and signed.
Again, no right turn on red accidents there. Six collisions in the last three years.
Any recommendations from either of you for how to move forward?
I would look at the School approach. It's in the ordinance, but it's not signed for right on red. I'd have to look further into the northbound approach and the Appleton-Orne further.
I agree. I think most of it needs further discussion. I think the School approach, because of the poor sightlines and the amount of pedestrian activity, at this time, I would support that. Yeah, I think further discussion on the other three would be warranted.
Okay. Questions?
Council Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Marcello, not being a member of the committee. Just a quick logistical question. So if you have the blue arrow, which is, it's in the ordinance but not signed, so is it just in general, it would make sense to put the sign? Or is it, or is this going way back and anything that was in the ordinance but doesn't have a sign could have changed? Like, you know, I don't know how long ago, you know, it was put in the ordinance, so maybe traffic was really different back then. So I was just curious, if you see a blue line, it makes sense to put a sign there because it's in the ordinance? Or it makes sense to look at it because that may have been put in an ordinance a very long time ago and things could be different? So just to understand a little bit of your thinking as we look at this, you know, in regards to your recommendations, if that makes sense.
We do look at when they were passed, so we have a sense of how long ago it was. Also look to see if any changes to the intersection itself geometrically has happened, and we haven't seen that in this particular case. It could be a sign fell down and just was never put back up. We've had instances all around the city like that, and then sometimes just, some go longer than others. But we are looking at, I wouldn't say a blanket, if it's blue, let's, let's put the sign back up. In this particular instance, I would say so.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, that does answer the question because I was wondering if...
Thank you. Yeah, that does answer the question, because I was wondering if the ordinance was there and it's not signed, at some point, did somebody think it was a good idea to, yeah, get down? But your point, yeah, it could have just come down anyway. So, thanks, that helps.
Counsel Stott?
Thank you, Chair. This is a tricky intersection, to sum it up, and I definitely think it needs a broader conversation. I don't, I actually thought I was going crazy every time I went to the light. I was like, is this one I can take a right? It felt like they changed often, so I agree that signs just fall down sometimes or get knocked down. This intersection and all its special, it has been redesigned recently with the North Street and the bumpouts of the turn radius. So the one that is not in ordinance and not signed, the turning ratio now is so hard to take a right on red that it doesn't make as much sense, but also I don't necessarily want to just say, let's make that a right on red, because I will then back up all of Appleton. So I think it definitely requires a longer conversation, especially with that Appleton-Orne intersection there. But I'm very curious if anybody else has any, you know, the Traffic and Parking Commission or any members from the public have any comments or feedback on the right on red at this intersection, because it is one of each, one, each flavor is here. I wish I had the magical answer for what we should do, but I'm not sure what we have there now. I definitely agree with the North onto School. There's no sightline there, so you should not be able to take a right on red there. The other ones, I'm a little fuzzy.
Anything else? Traffic and Parking Commission, do you have anything?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Just to answer the question there, I think with Appleton in particular, is that Orne? Is that, yeah? So where Appleton meets Orne, it does force more right angle, and you have a pretty good sightline looking east down North Street into Salem. So in my personal experience, I haven't had any problem with traffic backup there for lack of ability to turn right, unless there's heavy traffic on North Street, which there often is. But I don't think that there's, this particular intersection, that approach would be solved by adding signage. Just speaking generally, I don't want to take on behalf of my fellow commission members, but I do find this approach to be valuable from a public information perspective. I know it's dry and boring and can get, feel like it drags on, but I think it's good for this body to understand, like, the nitty-gritty details of how our city operates and give members of the public a chance to see that in motion. So I appreciate Counsel Harvey's kind of concern about, maybe we're going a little overboard here, and I appreciate that. I want to be sure that we focus on the thing that we're here for, which is, you know, we have a bunch of ordinances, and we have street signage that doesn't necessarily match, and the ordinances may not actually cover what we really want to do with these places now that we have more opportunities to make changes. So I think that we've done a pretty good job of getting back to the point. You know, we're kind of figuring out how we were going to do it last meeting, and that led to some, you know, I think consternation, but I think we're on the right path here. So I just want to say thank you, and I appreciate the fact that the council's willing to go through this and learn about the various parts of town in more detail about how we operate. Bureaucracy is not always fun, but sometimes it is necessary. So thank you.
Anyone else from the commission? Okay.
If I may.
Yeah, Lieutenant Tucker.
Back to the intersection for one second and then a comment on that. I think the only right, allowable right on red here that of concern would be the westbound approach north. That's the, that's a desire line for traffic that drives to Beverly. Every other approach never really backs up. Appleton might back up, but they're not going right. They're going to go left downtown. So the only one, I think, that really bears some consideration would be that purple one. In terms of scheduling the next meeting, I don't want to be out of order here. You know, you have a commission, I think they could probably, we could probably study these and present them as a package. I don't want to derail the next meeting about downtown. Certainly want your input and the public's input, but that could be an option, where the commission and Traffic and Parking Department and my assistants, we could present a recommendation on, I think that's where we're heading anyway, but present a recommendation on all of these. A lot of it is just going to be ordinance cleanup, putting signs where they
Correct, yeah.
have been, or putting ordinances where signs are, and then probably 60/40, and then recommendations for the ones that haven't been addressed.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is that the Traffic and Parking Commission meet on the downtown lights first to come up with a recommendation?
Question, if it pleases the committee, that that could be an approach. Maybe, maybe I should have thought of that a month ago, but it could be discussed, and then a chance for public input, either through the commission, Traffic Commission, or this committee. Just an idea.
I mean, it's fine with me if you want to do the, if you want to take a first shot at the downtown lights and incorporate the rest of what we've discussed, bring it back with a recommendation, and then our next committee meeting will be to focus on your recommendations for downtown, and we will have the package then. So then that will actually be good. We can pass it through committee. Does that make sense, Dave? I don't want to be, Lieutenant Tucker and I are kind of planning your life here.
I'm just thinking about the other items that I'm planning to bring before the commission, so this could delay it slightly, but I'm not against that idea. I think it makes sense. It's typically how we've done things, so. And then there's opportunity for the counselors to come to those meetings as well, and the public to provide feedback, so.
Right, and then it still will come back here, so we'll still have more public feedback if that's necessary, and we'll still have amendments that can be offered from OLA on the stuff that we haven't talked about yet, and discuss in full what the recommendations are. Correct? Does that sound like a plan, OLA? Is everybody in agreement on that? Traffic and Parking, Traffic and Parking Commission?
Our next Traffic and Parking meeting is going to be the 13th.
13th, yeah.
That's correct. I have a number of other items I'm hoping to bring before you. We can take a look at the load and see how much you think we can get through. But, yeah, I mean, downtown was always, I think, going to be the longest discussion.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of meat on that bone, for sure. So my, I think my follow-up question would be for the chair. When would you like to reschedule the third meeting, since we have to do that anyways? If you, if we're going to do it after the Traffic and Parking Commission meeting, what are you thinking about for the recommitting this joint meeting?
I mean, I'm flexible. I need to work within the schedules of some members in OLA, one of which is the downtown ward counselor. So I would say, I mean, the faster you can get it done, the better on her timetable, but, you know, I also understand that you guys have stuff. If, I mean, if this doesn't work, we can go through with the original plan, and you guys can come with a recommendation, and we can discuss, you know, without it having gone to Traffic and Parking first. Like, I don't want this to be a holdup either. I would like to finish this up.
Sorry, my preference is to go through with the commission. I'll
Okay.
move some things around and
Okay. That's fair. That's fair. Sound like a plan? Okay. Anything else on this? Does anyone from the public have anything that they want to add? And anyone in Zoom in the public, if you'd like to raise your hand? Can you come up right up? You have to come up to the microphone.
I wholeheartedly support you guys in your endeavor to work on this very difficult situation. I support a lot of intersections with no right turn on red. There's a lot of them that need a little more adjustment, and some of the ones that don't need it, we can look at those and determine which ones don't need it. I do want to caution everybody that we are in the smart signal process of like phase two. And what I want you guys to consider is that some of the alterations that we may be making may interfere with the smart signal program, okay, which is, we're trying to do concurrent signals on our main arteries to help move vehicle traffic and pedestrian traffic. So I want to just make everybody aware of the fact that what we're trying to do. And I have some handouts that will explain the concurrent signal program. And we're moving forward, basically.
Can you speak right into the mic? Sorry.
Moving forward and going up North Street, that's one of our main corridors. So Counsel Stott's been very patient. Like she said, I've been at that intersection of North Street and School Street. We looked at North and Mason Street. We're looking at Essex Street and North Street, making those signals concurrent. We also have the option of doing a hybrid intersection, you know, at somebody intersections, like Essex and North would be a good one, seeing that we could make no left-hand turn going up North Street North. So then the concurrent signals would be going straight ahead. And so once we get by North and Essex, we go to North and Federal Street, which we're currently working on pedestrian signal coming south on North Street, right at Federal Street. We're putting a new pedestrian signal, ADA compliant, which was never there in the original design. So we've added that into the mix. And we're also adding a lot of countdown timing signals, and we're adding new overhead lights, signage along with the parking and traffic, you know, the ones that they allow, and the police department. But I just want to make everybody aware that we need to plan this very carefully so that we don't interfere with the smart signal project, which North and Wilson, yeah, not North, Jefferson Avenue and Wilson Street, that's going to be incorporated in the smart signal project at a later date. That's coming along. I think that's already out the bid. Am I right, David?
Yes, that is.
Okay. Okay. So thank you for your time, and I concur with the counselors that the ordinance, the Legal Affairs Committee, should update all the ordinances. Proper signage should be put out. The road markings are very important to tell people where they are, the crosswalks, and there we go.
Thank you. That is why you were invited, was because we know that there are smart signals and that there is like this, you're trying to manage the traffic that way. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Mirzalal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Giardi. Is Washington and Derby a concurrent light operation?
No, not yet. No.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Stott?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, John, for, Mr. Giardi, for commenting that. And I know I've, I think North and School might have been the first one, so we definitely had a one-on-one time together going over this. And I don't necessarily support the idea of not having an exclusive pedestrian phase for crosswalks at some lights, but I just want to note that I appreciate the timing that you have worked out for those lights to have. I think it's like a 12 or 15-second exclusive pedestrian crossing before it changes. I mean, I think that works, and I appreciate the partnership in trying to get there. And I definitely hope that you continue to have that with the Traffic and Parking Commission, as these lights are implemented throughout the city in different intersections. It's going to be really important to continue to have those conversations about which ones need, like, perhaps that little bit of tweaking, because just like that little timing really makes a huge difference, especially when cars are, can take right on reds or are just used to flying through. I mean, at this point, it's a green, and a pedestrian has the walk through, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. The LPI, which he's talking about, is that we give the pedestrians a little lead time to get into the intersection. Like, the countdown won't start until, like, after you press the button, and what will happen is, you get 10 seconds or 15 seconds for the pedestrian to walk out before any traffic moves. So then the pedestrian feels safe, they can continue to the second lane, and then traffic's already gone by. So it makes it a lot safer with the LPI.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Merkel?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Lo, not being a member of the committee, I just wanted to take a very quick second to say thank you to our guests and also to the Traffic and Parking Commission. Your next meeting sounds lengthy, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? I do not see any raised hands. Counsel Presley's game.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Lo, this is directed towards David Kacharsky, because you mentioned something that kind of drew my interest, the Safe Streets Initiative that we're getting a grant for that's going to take a few months. Just for my own sake, I'm not sure how many other councils are familiar with it, or the public that's listening in on this. Exactly what does that entail, and how do we dovetail that into what we're doing now?
So as part of the last omnibus bill the federal government put forward, it's a new program called Safe Streets for All. It's, you might have heard of Vision Zero, its efforts to reduce crashes and fatalities on city streets, local streets. So the grant we awarded is to help develop an action plan where it identifies departments and various departments, what they should be doing when thinking about road projects. It identifies certain treatments that should be done on certain areas, looking at signalized intersections and what improvements could be made. It's not going into detailed design at every single intersection, but what it is, is helping to develop an overall plan, similar to, I'd say, the Complete Streets Plan that the city developed a few years ago, but a little more robust, because it's identifying sort of policies and procedures that also, there's recommendations that the city should adopt. So that's really the crux of it, and it's a lengthy process. It was a significant grant, and we'll have a consultant onboard to help facilitate the outreach and discussions with the council, with the Traffic and Parking Commission, with other department staff and department heads that should be involved in the process.
And will they be aboard? How big? How were they appointed? Where are they from?
There'll be a stakeholder committee that will be identified to help develop the action plan. And once that plan is ultimately adopted, then it'll allow the city to apply for future federal grants to implement some of the things identified in that plan. All right, thank you. Thank you for that information.
Anything else? Seeing none, I will take a motion. Counsel Watsonville?
Motion to adjourn.
How about if we have a motion to keep it in committee?
Apologies. Skip ahead. Motion to keep it in committee.
On the motion to keep it in committee, seconded by Counsel Davis. All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries, four to zero. Counsel Watsonville?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? All those opposed? The matter carries. Thank you very much.
That the Traffic Park Commission also needs to adjourn.
Oh, shoot.
Take a motion for that. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Thank you. Just a stroke of hands. All those in favor of adjourned? Good. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Thank you, we are adjourned.